We are completely supportive of all of your decisions or needs right now. And hope that at a future point, there will be a time and a place for you to come back and join.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I, I support you in what you need to do, but I'm being completely selfish and saying, please don't go. You're amazing for our city and you're amazing with this commission. And I value your insights and your knowledge. And so, yeah.
Well, you're kind. It's, uh, it's like Ephesians. There's a season for everything.
There is. And you have, you have been here quite some time. How many years?
Five years in January.
So.
Really? Five years? So you were only here, that seems like you've been here longer.
That's because he's got like decades of knowledge all in there. So it seems like you've been here decades.
Yeah, he spent two years with, uh, as, as the co-chair and then three years as chair. So anyways, I'd say, oh, Michelle, but you're doing good stuff. I'm glad to see the city's going in the right direction. I'm glad to see things have gotten on the right track. Not that they were ever on the wrong track, but I think you know what I mean.
Just so you guys are all aware, we're on YouTube now.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. If I can find where I put the agenda. Somebody stole it. Hold on. I go through this all the time.
Hey, yeah. And I also wanted to pass on some thoughts and stuff too, towards the end of the meeting, towards Keith. Um, so you're going to have to let me talk again.
Do it with, it'd be a privilege. I really have lost the agenda. Hold on. Now I have to do another search. So bear with me.
I can hurry and go out and send it to you if it's easier.
No, I've got it right here. I just have to, when I turn on my Zoom, I lose that page that I had saved.
Oh.
Hey, Keith, I did want to tell you too, that the mayor wanted to be here to, you know, extend his, his thoughts. And so I, I will pass on what he has to say towards the end. So.
Yeah, he actually sent me a very kind email. So that was very nice.
But then I'll just put it on public record too.
Thank you. Well, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. Uh, I'd like to welcome everybody to our Pleasant View City Planning Commission meeting on December 3rd. Like to welcome those on who are joining us through YouTube. At this time, I'd ask for someone to open our meeting with an expression of thought or prayer. Anyone, please?
I can.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful that we can meet his planning commission members who are here to represent the citizens of Pleasant View. And we express gratitude for this wonderful community in which we live and for the vision of those who came before. And we pray for insight and understanding in moving forward. And that we might be able to represent the citizens and the plans for the city. At this time, Heavenly Father, we also express our appreciation for our chairman, Keith Priest, and the wonderful service that he has given over the last five years and the high regard that all of us have him in. And, um, the example that he has set for each of us. And we pray at this time that thou put us him moving forward with the things that he needs to take care of in his life. That he will have thy guiding hand and that he will know of the support and love of all of those who have been fortunate to serve with him in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Julie. That's very much appreciated. Okay, now we have this wonderful thing that, oh, and just as an FYI, uh, I won't say it now. When we go offline, I'll say it. In accordance with Utah State Code, section forty-two dash four dash two oh seven, paragraph four, section A, I Keith Priest, Pleasant View City Planning Commission Chair hereby make the following declaration. That the state of national and state emergency has been declared in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And that Governor Herbert has extended the emergency declaration for Weber County issued on July 24th and extending to December 3rd, 2020. And that the state code has been amended to allow for the conduct of the electronic meeting in an emergency without an anchor location. And that the planning commission chair shall read this, shall read or cause to be read at each electronic meeting, the reasons and facts behind the declaration. And therefore Pleasant View City Planning Commission shall hold electronic meetings as provided for in state code. Signed by myself. So at this time, I'll ask everybody's hopefully has reviewed the agenda. And if there are any conflict of interest, if you please sort of declare at this time. Okay. With that then, we'll ask for an approval of the agenda and the minutes from, from November 5th and November 12th, planning commission meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Prove those. Okay, we have a motion to approve. You have a second?
A second.
Thank you. And any opposed? Say aye. Okay, with that, uh, first item legislative public hearing. This will be a discussion to recommend a decision to city council to rezone request from C2 Commercial to RE15 Residential on parcel nineteen dash two oh seven dash triple zero one located on southeast corner of thirteen twenty-five West and Highway eighty-nine. Jill?
All right. So. All right, here we go. So here's where the location is. Um, it's just the southeast corner of thirteen twenty-five West, Highway eighty-nine, just like Keith said. The current zone is C1. The general or the future land use map does show residential two to three units per acre. So, oops, someone's waiting in the waiting room. Let me look. Trouble. I bet you that's Dean. Um, so before I get too far, I wanted to bring up some of the comments that were, um, sent.
Jill?
Yeah?
Can I have you go ahead and do the presentation and then we'll hear the comments during the public, uh, comment section?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to touch on a couple of key points that one of the comments gave. So I can kind of go with the presentation. Is that okay?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, so Tony Pittman, um, did make some comments and, um, Tony, if you're watching, I appreciate it. Um, I really do appreciate all the comments that public gives. He did make one comment that this was planned and the developer knew it and it was in the general plan. So I dug a little deeper because what happens when I do the research, when these applications come in, is I actually do an abstract on the actual lot itself. Um, and I didn't find anything. So when Tony did give me that information, um, I did notice on an old general plan, it did show commercial. But again, the current future land use map, it does show residential. So we did change that in 2017. So that, that has changed. Um, just a quick recap, when he said that it was the developer new, I, I dug a little bit more deeper. The, the letter that you can see, it says, Dear Paul, that is actually the request for, um, the project. It's called Westview Subdivision, which is now known as Jacob's Mill. There's, that is the request for it to be changed to C1 and the RE15. Um, and as you can tell, here's the approval for that rezone. Here's the, the key point. And I kept racking my brain trying to figure this out. So there was a development agreement and it is scanned in and then it is recorded. However, it is for, it says for phase one, two, and three. But when you read it, it doesn't state anything about commercial. Um, it is all about the residential. And that was actually approved by city council and it was reported November 2003. Doing some more research, I did find a draft development agreement that does talk about the commercial. However, it was never presented. It was never, um, finalized. It was never recorded. There's no signatures. There's no agreement at all to the C1. So there's no restrictions to keep it or change it or whatever. So the reason why I'm telling you guys this is to treat it just like any other parcel because there's no agreement linked to it. There's no, um, legal binding on this. So we would need to treat it just like any other residential or any other commercial requesting to be rezoned, either or. Um, so as staff, we recommend approval because of the change with the general plan that was done in 2007, changing it to residential. Um, and we see no issues with it. And that's the presentation.
Since you got that up and this is totally unrelated and I apologize, but looking at the future land use map, you show a parcel that is in green. That's west of eighty-nine. What is that?
Right here?
Uh huh.
That is our park that we are creating.
The all sports park?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, uh, Chairman?
Yes.
I, I've just got a comment. When I was reading over the emails that Jill had sent of people sending in comments, there was one dated, let's see, what was the date? Oh, November eighteenth, I think it was, November eighteenth. And it looks like it was from Tony Pittman who said, um, it said, I saw that the planning commission is wanting to change the C1 to RE15 out of Jacob's Mill. And, you know, occasionally, yes, there are things maybe that come from the city that are, but most of the time, these issues are because property owners come forth and want that change. It's not that we as a planning commission sit around and say, hey, let's take somebody's property and change it from what it already is for, for our own purposes. I think, I think it's really important that our citizens understand that these issues come forward because of the request of property owners who are asking us. And, um, so that I saw the planning commission is wanting to. It's really not us wanting to. It's the property owner desiring this change. And I would like that to be on record.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Farrar. Just also for the record, Tony is, uh, he's a friend and, uh, he's sat on the planning commission for many years. And I think he knows that. I think he misworded what he was saying. That, because he understands the city doesn't want to do anything. It's the request or the application that, that initiates these, uh, rezones.
Thank you.
May I speak to this, please? If you got a month, a minute?
Yes, please.
Are we ready?
Uh, Jill, are you down? We can enter a public hearing now.
Go ahead.
Before we jump into a public hearing, might I address a little bit of, of the background of that, of what Julie brought up and a little bit of maybe Tony's, uh, comments. Um, on this parcel, there is a little bit of a history on this, just so Julie understands. This was actually on the master plan, on the general plan, that this was a C1 before. And it has been brought up before to be moved to a RE15 or even actually smaller to patio homes once before. And it did pack the, uh, city hall. It was a full house. And there was, uh, Tony was, uh, there was a whole group from the Jacob's Mills, uh, group. And they packed the house. And at the time, the planning commission actually denied the rezoning of it from a C1 to a smaller, um, we'll call it lower density. And partly because at that time, it was not on the general plan for anything but the C1. Now, since then, it was not the landowner. So Julie, it was not the landowner that asked for it to be changed on the master plan, on the general plan, to be changed from C1 down to as it is currently. But the, somewhere along the line, the planning commission and the city council has changed it as we see it now on the future land use map to be all RE15. So that is, the, the landowner can now come and request a change from the C1 currently to the RE15. And then that would meet the current needs.
Yes. Yes. I was just addressing to the fact that this is coming forward tonight, not from our request, but from the property owner, correct?
Yes, or.
This, um, zone, this own request was from the property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Keith, may I ask a question?
Please.
Um, Jill, did you by chance pull up any of the city council notes or planning commission notes during the, when that was changed to the future land use map and maybe the context of why it was changed?
I had, I didn't get that far.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that was two thousand and seven? Is that what you said?
Two thousand seventeen. So three years ago.
I'm trying to think. I was on the, the, the city council at the time of what the context was of why we were doing that.
A few of us actually suggested that we leave it that way. And others said, let's have everything residential on the, the side of eighty-nine and let's keep everything commercial on the west side of it. Cause I was actually one opposed and said, let's keep our commercial nodes. And I was overvoted. And they said, let's keep the residential on one side. And so that was actually.
Why was it even brought up? Was it something that was brought by staff or by administration or city council looking forward to change? Uh, that, that's my, why was it even brought forward?
I think it was a standardizing certain areas.
Okay.
From, from.
I think, Andy, this parcel, this parcel that you're talking about, I don't believe that's the one that was brought forward to be a patio home. I think that was farther.
That was farther. That, that was, that was a lot further back. That was not in two thousand seventeen, but back further it was.
That was, are you talking about the one at the end of the dead end road that, that, that was in two thousand and?
The one on the Denon Road was just.
That was two thousand eighteen.
And it's, it was on the other side of the church.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a, that's a different one. That's a different one. This is, this is one that was brought up. And we specifically asked the people, would you prefer to have commercial versus residential? And they, they flat out said, we would prefer to have resident, uh, commercial than residential. And we.
Jill, can you show that area? Uh, what commercial do we have already in that area or, or do we? You know, when I drove, I tried to drive by it, but it looked like there really isn't a lot of commercial going on right there immediately.
There is, if you can see the map right here. Um, here's our sports park right here.
Uh huh.
There's a business going right here. Keep in mind, everything on the west side of Highway eighty-nine is going to be light industrial. So it's gonna, it's not gonna be like shops, things like that. Um, so you have, it's, they're, the company name's Coldwater is building right here currently. There's another, I'm, um, Stonefield Way has, it's almost built out. There's maybe one or two lots that are open out of, I want to say there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, out of, I want to say thirteen or fourteen lots. Um, down here, you have Three XL, which is that trucking company. And then farther, um, farther south on Highway eighty-nine, you have, um, uh, HVAC building. My brain's not thinking about.
DLS, DLS.
Thank you. Um, you have quite a few down. We just have these larger parcels. Um, there's a home that actually is right here. You can see the house right there. Someone actually still does live there.
But on the east side of eighty-nine, we have the Pepsi plant, correct? And then it's all residential until you get to, um.
Woody's.
Woody's.
Woody.
Mm-hmm. You do have the, um, neighborhood commercial throughout the neighborhood, but nothing on Highway eighty-nine or twenty-seven hundred.
Correct. Okay.
And the, recently with the rezoning and stuff, that was, that was, um, parcels on Highway eighty-nine and twenty-seven hundred, but we didn't do.
We didn't do any, yeah, we didn't do any highway. We just did twenty-seven hundred.
Didn't we do a few on Highway eighty-nine?
No, not yet. Just twenty-seven hundred.
But Highway eighty-nine is coming.
Yes, once we can kind of filter that and figure out which zones, then everything on that, we would look more on the west side of Highway eighty-nine. But that's another project.
But we did decide in the future land use map that homes or the lots east of eighty-nine will generally be residential, with the exception of a few lots that are, uh, residential neighborhood.
Yes, and it would be considered low density.
Um, you know, in, in reading the comments, and maybe I'm wrong on this, and the rest of you can tell me your impressions. I almost got the impression that citizens weren't as much concerned about the residential one-third acre lots as their fear that we would change the zoning. And then somehow the zoning would be changed again and it would become higher density. Is that, eh, eh, at least that was kind of an impression that I received. If citizens really were assured it's one-third acre, it's staying one-third acre, it wouldn't be higher density than that.
Well, the application speaks for itself and that's what we're addressing tonight.
Yeah, I, I was just going by the comments, you know, the, the comments, the concern really seemed to be so higher density or patio homes or condos or townhomes or something along that line.
If you're ready, we can open.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion that we open this hearing now to a public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we open to a public hearing at this time.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, we're now in a public hearing. So Jill, do you have any comments from?
Yes. So there's the comments that were given, um, earlier, Tony Pittman about the, um, commercial land and, um, also Mace. And I'm sorry, guys, I'm really not good with names. So I'm sorry if I don't pronounce them correctly. Is it Basler? Um, they're wanting to keep as much commercial as we can. We don't have as many in Pleasant View. Um, we do have a couple on YouTube. Uh, her, her Tobell, um, she said, she stated, a few years ago, they asked to rezone in it to multifamily, um, housing for townhomes. That's when the neighborhood packed the house. Also, a Ray and Mitch one. Yes, the concern was high density housing. And that was one of the big concerns that I got, um, with the questions. Um, could it open the door for higher density? Would it allow for apartments? Um, what would happen to the develop, if the developer decided to do a higher density within the, um, RE15? Um, so just to kind of answer those, and I wanted to wait till we were on, um, public hearing, is RE15 is just for third acre lots and it's single family homes. We don't allow for multiple homes within the third acre lot. If they wanted a higher density, they would have to do another rezone. Um, so that's to kind of help answer the higher density question and concern the highest they're going to get with this rezone that they're requesting. Um, sorry, hold on, something just popped up. There we go. Um, the higher dead, the highest density they're going to get is the thirty acre lot unless they request to have it rezoned again. Um, it won't allow again for any apartments. Um, Jeremy Jensen just said, agreed. And that's all we've got right now. We do have, um, let's see. We do have eighteen people watching.
All right, questions from commissioners? Comments? Concerns?
I have a question.
Please.
So can you just clarify a little more? In two thousand seventeen, we changed the, we didn't rezone it, but we changed the master plan. I'm just confused. Like if this happened.
Future land use map.
Future land use map, but we didn't rezone it. We.
Who said he didn't?
What happens with, when we go through all the, um, information on where we want certain things for the general plan and the future land use map? We hold open houses and whatnot. Then we have a public hearing to either adopt the, where we want certain things along with the general plan. And it, it goes from planning commission to city council and it was adopted by, um, city council. So yes, we changed the future land use, the future idea of what they want in that parcel. Does that kind of help answer your question?
Yes. There was no zoning request though. It was strictly a, a future land use map change only.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I comment?
Please.
So future land use map, it is, is not necessarily binding, but that's the intent of the city and the general public. And when we did a future land use map, um, reza, you know, change, public notice was given to the residents to come and to express their, you know, discontent or agreement in whatever way, form. And to my knowledge, because I was on the council at the time, there wasn't, eh, eh, you know, either way. And so, um, a few, some, the, the specific instances that you guys are talking about is when a developer came to ask for the rezone. That's when that came. Because future land use map shows the intent of what the city would like. And yes, it's important. And yes, it's important to follow the intent of what the city would like. But also, it is, you know, to the discretion of planning commission and city council to correct or adjust that intent at any time.
Okay, is the developer present with his stream?
John, yes, he is. And while, just so you know, one more comment came through, Colton Law, says, "My wife and I would also like to see that land stay RE fifteen, keep all the commercial on the other side of Highway eighty-nine."
So this is a, as an FYI to that comment, it is currently commercial. The zone request is to allow it to be RE fifteen, correct?
Correct.
And, oh, that's correct, and the future land use map shows it being RE fifteen or residential.
Right, and John is here, he is the advocate, John Hanson.
Hey, any questions? John, welcome.
Thank you. Eleven sixty-five West, four thousand North in Pleasant View. Appreciate the, uh, planning commission, uh, being so thorough, especially you, Jill, on the notes and the history, which I didn't know. I have been involved with this for a certain amount of time. I thought it was good research. Uh, I would just like to point out a couple of features about this project. It's not a big project. Uh, even though the zoning is fifteen thousand square foot lots, there's only one lot that's fifteen thousand. The others are twenty-three, eighteen, twenty-four, twenty, eighteen, and seventeen, and sixteen. So they're greater than a third-acre lot, which I think would allow families to do different things in their backyard, uh, without feeling too much, uh, restriction. Also, I think that where this property sits, next to Jacob Mills, there's a church across the street. Uh, the city just approved Rocky Meadows that will abut this property on the south. It just seems to all flow east of that road to be residential. And, uh, that's my feeling, it would never be different, as Jill said. I mean, that's the zoning. We would plan on starting construction, uh, early spring and provide, uh, some housing for eight more families to live in our great city, Pleasant View. I'd also like to say a few things about commercial. The only commercial development you have in your city is the one that Brent Bailey, Dee Hanson, and John Hanson did on twenty-seven hundred north and Highway eighty-nine. We brought in the Ogden Clinic, we brought in Lady Fitness, we brought in Texas Lost Texan, and, uh, we brought lots of professional offices into that complex. Uh, it's been very successful, uh, for the offices. However, the retail has been very painful. We're still have a lot just south, or west of Ogden Clinic, that has been on the market for eleven years. And, uh, we have had no takers. Currently, we have someone that's looking at it. It just baffles me as to, uh, why that hasn't sold, or the other two pads. Scooters did, uh, put a little coffee shop there. The traffic along twenty-seven hundred is nearly twenty-five thousand cars a day going back and forth. Uh, my feeling is, and my son Dee's doing a development down there by Maverick. Uh, he thinks he has a couple national tenants that want to be close to the freeway. Uh, Jill may know that, but still, nothing is inked. So Pleasant View is, uh, it's a tough, it's a tough sale. If you get too far off the freeway, the national tenants don't want to come there. If you get into an area like this property, the, the traffic, I was amazed, and we can double-check, is only like six thousand cars a day on Highway eighty-nine compared to the twenty-plus thousand on twenty-seven hundred. This cannot be considered a corridor for, um, you know, for a lot of commercial uses. To me, Pleasant View's best commercial is the Fleming property and the Frank Stone. He has an extra, well, they just sold that to Young, uh, Sports Model. But that's where your commercial is, and then what my son is doing down, uh, further towards the freeway. And then you have the twenty-seven hundred, uh, corridor. That, we would hope with five hundred west, that that would start going. That's where the people will want to go. Uh, I just talked to another national tenant this morning that I'm going to drive him along twenty-seven hundred. Show them our pad, hopefully something will happen. But, uh, there is no way that they would ever consider, uh, going along, uh, you know, Highway eighty-nine for commercial. It's just not a commercial site.
Hey, John Hanson?
Did I talk too long?
No, no, I was just, I, I just wanted to say, this is Sarah Urie, how you doing?
Pretty good. What's me?
We want to, we want to help you out in any way possible on twenty-seven hundred, friend, we really do. We want that commercial to come in, so yay, just wanted to add that in.
That's what I try to promote as a broker, is twenty-seven hundred. Uh, because that's, that's what's going to happen, uh, to connect Pleasant View with North Ogden. The other thing I want to point out is I've worked extensively before Mayor Taylor passed away, and now our new mayor in North Ogden. They understand without rooftops, you're not going to have commercial. It just ain't going to happen. And, uh, the more rooftops we have in Pleasant View that fit our, you know, what we want to create for an environment in Pleasant View, the better off we are. And so that's, that's really where it is. I would hope the planning commission would understand that, uh, this really is the best use for that property. Uh, you can never say never, but I've lived here nearly fifty years, and I don't ever see in my lifetime, maybe I only have two years left, but it's just not a commercial piece. And it's not fair to the neighbors, uh, you know, I guess if they want to go to this, you know, little store in Pleasant View to give a gallon of milk, they can. But, uh, anyway, that's my speech. I really think, having lived here and know a lot about commercial and residential real estate, that, that, that's, that should be residential across there. That's my speech, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Johnny, appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions for Johnny while we have him?
Not a question, but, um, I have to agree with some things that John said. I actually think that it could be a significant amount of time before that piece would end up being commercial. Um, our family owns property, their main commercial, and we've sat on it for a long time. Um, also, I think with it being there in the neighborhood, if I lived in that neighborhood, to be honest, I, I would prefer myself probably have, having residence around me versus having a seven-eleven on my corner and backing up to that. Um, in looking at it, and I drove by it, to me, it looks like it flows into residential property. But I'd like to hear what all of you have to say.
So I, Commissioner Farai, agree. I think that's why we changed our land use map. It fits more with residential on that side. It fits in with all the homes that are existing. And I absolutely agree with what Johnny's saying. I think twenty-seven hundred is going to be the corridor, and it's going to take a little bit of time. But I want to ensure all the commissioners that will happen. Uh, might be three to ten years, but once it starts, it's not going to stop. It'll be just like Antelope Drive in Leighton. And I've done a few, I've read a few reports where they're predicting, or projecting, excuse me, thirty-five hundred blacktops between West Haven and Perry. So thirty-five hundred homes, yes, that's far west, but it's still going to be a lot of individuals that'll be traveling to businesses that hopefully will be attracted by the twenty-seven hundred north corridor.
Yeah.
My, my opinion. Hey, any other comments?
There are no comments on YouTube, just FYI.
I'd like to make a comment about the evolution of my thinking on this. Uh, initially, when I looked at the comments from the folks who wrote in, they made an argument saying that, uh, the, in the long term, the city could benefit from a tax advantages, having it commercial. But the one thing that wasn't apparent is what John said. It seems that it's a choice between maybe going with the rezone and having this residential application versus commercial that might not happen for a long time.
Could be a real long time.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, yeah, this.
There's one more comment that just came on. Rob Judson, that parcel is literally in our backyard, and I'd rather have low-density, single-family homes behind me than any commercial, anything commercial other than a second church. Other than that, that is, that's the last comment.
Well, speaking of my employer, there's not a chance for a second LDS church. I don't know about another denomination, but anyways, uh, this time we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I, I think Jeff had a comment.
I was, I was just going to say that, I, I mean, I'm in favor of the, the rezone. I, I agree with what's been said. I, I, I understand that we do need a commercial base, and I, and I totally respect Tony and others' opinions. Because I, I, I know that we needed sales tax base, and, and that, the only way it happens is for commercial. But, you know, in the construction industry, I also understand that, that that commercial's not going to come unless we get more rooftops within our area. And, and I, and I think just the nature of this piece just makes more sense to be residential. Um, so I would be in favor, even though I'm not voting tonight, I would be in favor of the, of, of rezoning it to residential.
And one more thing, too. It might make some people who are watching feel better to know that we have rezoned the twenty-seven hundred north to commercial. Like, we are hoping to get more commercial in Pleasant View. It's done, we re, we rezoned it. Yay. Um, and so it's not like we're taking one away without having an, a future plan where businesses will hopefully get more traffic. All right, maybe it'll make them feel better. I like to make it a little bit better.
And, and I think it's reassuring, too, to really talk to the developer, see the plan, and know that the plan really is for one-third acre or larger lots. You know, this isn't, uh, trying to get in the back door of, we'll do third, and then we'll come back in six months and try and get in patio homes or something else, which probably wouldn't be successful if they tried. But that's besides the point. Um, I, I think it's reassuring maybe to have heard from the developer and see the plan and know what the size of lots, uh, actually are.
Okay, Jill, I have a question for you before we close the public hearing.
Yes.
Water retention, has it been addressed? Does it need to be addressed?
We will make sure it is addressed when the preliminary comes. And if they can't address any issues on a subdivision level, they won't be able to do it.
Did you note that on your staff report?
That's a big thing on my, can we close the public hearing and then have discussion among ourselves?
There was one more comment that just came through.
I have one more question, too, before you close, if that's okay.
Yeah, so Sarah, you asked your question, then we'll go to the YouTube question.
Oh, I just, I, so i- if my, if, if memory serves me right, that particular parcel and a couple others right in that area does have some water issues, right, Jill?
The water table is high.
And, and of course, that will be addressed, and that's later on. This is not the question, y- you know, I was just, for information's sake.
So, when, when a rezone happens, it's just to possibly get subdivision with that size. But when they come for a preliminary, um, we, as staff, and that includes our engineer, um, important person, I mean, the whole gamble. We sit down, we dissect everything, make sure everything works. Um, if it's not going to work, what do they have to do to get it to the point where they could make it work? Or it's just not going to be able to be?
That'll be addressed later. I just wanted to know, it was just curious.
The reason why I brought that up is because with the church on eighty-nine, we was required to take that water under eighty-nine and have it pop up on the west side.
Yes.
And it was all, it was also, it was also heavily mentioned by Jill's staff reports, Clearback from the Moors, when they developed Jacob's Mill. And that was brought up as a big concern of the Moors, that all of that filled in Jacob's Mill. And just as a side note, Jacob's Mill has had water problems, and a lot of those basements have been flooded just with heavy rainstorms, and we haven't had a hundred-year rainstorm yet. So all of that at the bottom, those new eight potential homes, would also have that same potential of, of flooding. So that's one of those things that I will be expecting in a preliminary plot plan to make sure that that is covered. And so I would have brought that up in my next, after we close the public hearing, I will expect that to be brought up.
Okay, thank you. There is a question on Zoom?
There is a comment that came in. It was Tanya Greaves. She said, "The biggest concern for many in Jacob's Mill is high-density housing." And then her Tobell, "Yes, my backyard is soggy most of the summer." Um, so, and Crink, Crink, Sarah has has a really big WAP, W A P. So, um, Colton Law just put, "We've had flooding issues in our home, too, and we're right off of Highway eighty-nine." So just to kind of reiterate, Dana is an amazing engineer, and between her and Tyson and, um, all of us in our development group, we are aware of the water table, and that's one thing. We, we require geotech tests, you know, where the water table is, so we can make sure everything's looked at and taken care of. Um, with our next item, you can even ask Jim, Jim Flint, who has done quite a few subdivisions. We, we make sure that everything, um, that does go through a preliminary, that we look at everything that we possibly can to make sure everything is adequate and looked at. So back then, I, I'm not sure to the extent, I would hope that back then it would have been done. It might have not have had, we might not have had the resources as we do now, I'm not sure. But for everyone in Jacob's Mill, if this, if this passes, um, it is just for third-acre lots, no high-density, it's considered low-density, one to two. It would be considered three units per acre, which is just a third-acre lot, single-family. And that's all the comments we have. Hope Stacy Story just put, "I agree, don't high-density anywhere in Pleasant Fields, too." So.
And, uh, Mark Hanson just posted that they are very well aware of the water situation, and that will be addressed before or during the preliminary.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing at this time.
Thank you. Motion made to close public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And any opposed? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, any other thoughts or concerns?
A lot of the concerns that we've discussed tonight, you know, obviously aren't part of the zoning change. And so a lot of that stuff can be addressed at the next step.
I agree. I agree. Okay, anybody else have anything before I entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to just, just make one comment that I was prepared, when I first started reading this, that I was ready to bring up the concerns of the people in the past was, um, to stick with the commercial based on the prior, uh, meetings that we had in the past, where the people actually came, packed the house, and said they would rather have commercial than to have the residential and the high-density residential. And so I was going to stick with what they wanted in the past. And so I was going to stick with what they wanted in the past. But we have had open houses, we've had hearings, we've had public hearings and we've, this, the planning commission and the city council has changed the future land use map to have that as an RE15 as a future. And so myself, I, after seeing Jill's report and seeing that's what the future land use map is, I am in a tendency to go ahead and say, let's go ahead and change the rezoning at this time. So I, I like what's being proposed at this time. And I'll be happy to see what they propose to us in the, in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner F. Okay, then of that, I'll entertain a motion that we, this is a, an approval to city council that we request, request approval or denying of the rezone request from C2 Commercial RE15 on parcel 19-207-001, located on the southeast corner of 1325 West and Highway 89. Motion for approval.
Motion is read by President Priest.
President? Promotion or demotion? Okay, we have a motion from trouble. Thanks, Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, and we have a second from Commissioner Lund. Any oppose, say aye? Okay, motion go forward to city council.
Oh my gosh, I was so excited to second it and then I got.
Well, because of Zoom, it's better to say oppose than in favor because there's too many delays. So we're good. All right, item number two on the agenda, discussion recommendation, sorry, discussion recommended decision to city council. Budge Farm Phase One Preliminary Subdivision 30 lots on parcel 19-014-0066 and 61 and 10, located at 1500 West between Pleasant View Drive and Highway 89. Jill.
All right. I'm on computer. There we go. Okay, so as you can tell, this is where it's located. It's just north of the rezone that we just did. It's three parcels at the end of 1500 West. I don't know if you guys will remember this, this was actually brought to you guys in 2018. So the applicant is actually Nielsen Land Development, which the applicant that's on with us is Brian. So really quick, this is the layout, there's going to be 30 lots, 30 acre lots. Right here. I'm out wide, but 19 is parcel A, parcel A is the detention pond, not lot 19, sorry. That's a typo. So some of the questions and concerns that I've received was, does the subdivision have access to Highway 89? Yes, it does. It will actually come out off of, it'll match up right with where Stonefield opens up, so 1500 onto Highway 89. And oops, wrong way. Someone asked if there's going to be an HOA and what types of homes. The types of homes would be again, single family residents. I don't know if there's going to be an HOA. Brian can answer that when you guys have him talk. Other than that, the water table is high, which we are fully aware of. Jim has been awesome and has designed a lot of the drainage and everything to hopefully work out as best as we can. Again, with how everything works, we can't wave a magic wand and never have anything happen in life. But I know that with previous meetings and previous conversations, Andy, you can help me with that. At the very bottom of 1500 West, right now it's pretty much a nice skating rink when it snows. And, correct Andy?
Yes, and Jim, you can chime in. There, there's the turnaround at the bottom of 1500 West. That just becomes a big water sludge. There's a couple of areas where there's sub pumps that are running and it just pumps nonstop. And so when they talked about changing the subdivision, or the zoning on those, the, there was a commitment made that they would tie in to water lines or allow that subdivision to tie in to the, whatever you were, was going to be engineered. So the water lines, not only for the front of the 1500 West subdivision at the top, would be able to tie into that and you'd engineer that into that. And there's also a drainage behind those houses on the west side and that that would be calculated into it because that's also a lot of water running on the backside of those homes also. So I just want to make sure that's included into that, still part of it because that is a major concern from those people.
Can you put up the preliminary again, Jill?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm trying to get there.
And there, there is a lot, a lot of water that runs down both sides of those homes.
Right.
And, and that would create a lot of water for those homes below it. And to answer another, from one of the people that chimed in from the previous comments, the laws would be one of the subdivisions backing up to one of these subdivisions, same comment. If we have a rainstorm, those people have water in their basements, it's gonna abut into this subdivision also. So same issue, if they don't engineer, the same scenario is gonna happen.
Okay, Jill, do you know if that, uh, Highway 89 access, if there's going to be a required turn lane? And exit lane?
So, right here?
Yes.
Sorry, that my computer, I'm gonna move my computer so I can see it. Looking at, cause Jill's word is challenged and can't see over the computer. Okay. Okay, so right here where they're gonna have access off of Highway 89. Jim, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that they require a decel lane.
You're correct. There'll be no access off the highway, but they are gonna require a decel lane.
So, I mean, safety reasons as you can, right here, you'll be able to decel and be able to turn in. That turnaround up at the top of 1500 will no longer be there just because it'll punch a road through and it should take care of all that issue there, FYI.
Jim, how hard is this gonna be to tie in to the storm drain with all these homes and the water issues that we currently have?
There at the, at the top of 1500 West there, we're gonna have two inlets right at the, right by lot number one. So they'll catch all of it, it'll be actually a benefit for the existing 1500 West residents. So the storm drain will run all the way up to, right up to the north end of lot one. We've got two inlets on each side of the street. The land drain runs close to that. I think right now the, a couple of the residences up there pump through the curb. And so that water will all be collected in the storm drain system.
So show me, show me again where the storm drain system is, where you have a retention currently?
Retention, right.
That's, that looks pretty small. I guess it's probably larger than it looks on.
That's one of our biggest things is we make sure that the calculations of X amount of homes will be equivalent to the size of the detention or retention. In this case, it'd be detention.
And there's, they're starting, piping running all the way up 1500, all the way from that pond, all the way to the north end of lot one.
Have they looked to see how much water actually gets, that cul-de-sac becomes its own retention pond? That's a lot of water that gets, that literally becomes an ice skating rink in the winter time here. It's a lot of water that gets pumped down there.
Yeah, I think, I think we're actually improving. We're giving that water underground piping system to get all the way to the pond. So I see it being a good upgrade, actually.
And, and I, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure the volume's been looked at.
Okay.
Yes, Tyson, Jay, Jay was aware of it. And so Tyson is aware of it now with Dana, along with Dana, Dana is aware.
Okay, and Jim, I'm saying thank you. You know, I'm thank you that it's being looked at. I just want to make sure the volume's been looked at.
And I think that's based on a square footage of Hardscape, correct?
You're correct, yeah.
Okay. All right, any other questions? We have the developer here with us. Brian, thank you for joining us. Commissioners, any questions?
I was only gonna say, I really like the idea of an ice rink and you could make it really like an ice skating rink, but other than that, just know more entertainment.
That's, that's a commercial zone now, right?
One quick comment on YouTube. Colton Law said, yes, we have had big water issues in our home that backs up to that subdivision. We have installed a sub pump and it runs almost nonstop all year round, so.
Okay, that's inherent with a lot of properties in this area, so.
I have a quick question.
Please.
Hey, the road that parallels Highway 89, is that, is this, are we looking at phase one and then?
Yes, this is phase.
Phase two is the parcel that we just can't see off this.
Yep, it'll be right here.
Okay.
Jill, can you back the picture out a little bit more? So there's more of a overview of the area around as well. Let me share a different screen. I was prepared for this one. I just gotta share the rest of it now.
And we knew that.
There we go. So, I, I try. But as you can tell, there's the three lots. This will be phase two, which you will see hopefully soon. There's a bigger aerial shot, so you can see everything. It will match up right here and go straight up.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
So is it all of those parcels around that? Cause it's 30 lots, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yep, so it includes this one right here.
Okay.
And this longer one, and then this one down here. That is.
What happens to that lot that's just?
That's phase two.
Right here?
Uh huh.
That's phase two.
And that's the one that they tried to do those little patio homes in. So it'd be phase two and get absorbed into it. So that's a, that's a good, good answer to it.
What about those two at the very top that border Pleasant View Drive by Budge Lane?
Right here?
In your attach, in your attachment, attachment number one, that shows a vicinity map. It's actually the better map. Jill?
Yeah. Let's see if I can pull mine. I'm limited on what I can pull here, so hold up.
So are we talking four parcels or three?
It's three parcels for phase one.
And then is it the other three for phase two?
No.
No, just one.
Just one, so I'll, let me show you what all of it looks like. Oh, come on.
Is this where that dirt road is with, that you go down? That everybody takes the really pretty pictures like me?
No, 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 you're thinking Budge's Lane.
I know, from Pleasant View Drive. Do you see where it says Budge Lane?
No, that's not it.
That's not included in this at all?
No.
Okay, I'm able to pick it, hold up, it's coming.
That, that, that's the, everything to the east of that is. But not those two parcels.
So while it's trying to pull, these two parcels won't be touched. This is another project and then I know someone is selling this. I don't remember the person's name they called me today, but I'm going down, go to the right side. No, no, no. Okay. So here is. All right, so.
What page in the packet?
It is page. It's that first, um, page nine.
Thank you.
Page nine on that staff report.
Twenty seven, page 27 of the total packet.
Thank you, Jeff. So use your imaginations because I'm trying to get this thing to work, but it's not working, so.
Thank you. You're okay.
Where phase two is, and if you look at phase one, you know how it has a temporary turnaround and a little bulb, it's going to go straight and then tie into 1375. And that's the idea. Again, we're, we're working on that part. That piece isn't here, it's just phase one. So it's just those three faith, or those three parcels.
You're right, Nate, that's a lot better map. So thank you for pointing that out. So if you have your packets, Commissioner, go to page nine on item two or 27 in the total packet. It shows the clear phase one, phase two and the lots associated. So we're not looking at phase two. Is that part of this or is it phase one?
Just phase one right now. Phase two will come down the road. We're working.
So it's not part of preliminary, it's not part of the 30 homes?
Nope.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, any questions for the developer? I'm sure he's aware of the water issues.
Yeah, we, can you, can you hear me okay?
You can.
I have these dang headphones on, so you guys can't hear my, my seven kids screaming in the background. So hopefully that, that mutes it well enough. Um, yeah, no, we've, we've been, this project has been through, you know, 18 months, 24 months. I don't know Jill, how, how long this has been in the works. Um, but it's been scrutinized and reviewed a lot by staff. So we've got a, we've got a geotechnical report, they've gone out and dug holes out there. The groundwater, when they did the study, was at about six and a half feet was the highest that it got. And then there was about eight pits that were dug and the rest of them were quite a bit deeper than that. And so our, our homes, anyway, they, they won't, they won't get that deep. And so we're hopeful to avoid those issues because Nielsen Homes, that's, that's who's, that's why I work for that, who's doing this. Um, we want, we want happy customers. And so we're gonna do our best to make sure that we, we stay out, stay away from those issues, so.
Thank you. Okay, questions? Ashley, you look like you want to say something.
Sounds good. It sounds like we should, you know, move it on, move it along. It's usually what I have to say, so if you ask me, that's what I'm gonna say.
So this is a, a project by Nielsen Homes, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. And, and we, I, I should say, we're really excited about this project. We haven't built anything in Pleasant View for a little while. I think this is an important project for the city just because of the connectivity issues that were mentioned before, the extension of that 1500 West all the way down to UDOT. Um, so I, I, we're, we're really excited about it. Thirty lots is a great start. Phase two will be another six lots, which we've kind of already been through DRC with the city. And so we're hopeful that we'll, we'll be in front of the planning commission here January sometime if we can get all the engineering answers that we need to some of these outstanding questions. Um, but our, our timeline, and this might be helpful for the city, maybe not, but we, we want to get going as soon as we possibly can. Um, so we're hopeful to be in front of the city council before the end of the year on this one, at least on phase one, and then begin construction just as quickly as we can thereafter for a, a spring project. I mean, there could be homes out there starting this spring. So we're. um, starting this spring. So we're, we're really excited to get going. I, just a couple of other thoughts, just to throw out there if, uh, if they're helpful. Um, we've got thirty lots here. Eleven of them are in that fifteen thousand square foot range, and the rest exceed that. Um, five, or four or five of those lots are right along Highway eighty-nine, so we've made those lots just a little bit smaller, just because they're less desirable being along that busy road. Um, but some of them are as, as big as twenty-five thousand square feet, which is greater than a half an acre. Um, and there are a few of those in there, um, that we've got. So we're, we, we think it'll be a great community. Um, UDOT access was approved, and we are, as, as was mentioned before, we are gonna do that DCLA, and I thought that was an important factor, um, for you to consider, and UDOT's reviewed a lot of the safety elements surrounding that access. Um, so that's been an important part of our analysis in this project. Um, and then, um, hopefully, uh, just based off of the previous applicant, um, our hope is that these additional thirty lots and then six more in Phase Two, uh, will go a long ways in helping, uh, helping the city get that commercial pad sold that John's trying to sell. So hopefully, uh, hopefully that plays a role. We're not planning to do an HOA. Um, so that will not be needed as part of the project. Um, and I think those were all the questions that I heard, and if there are any others, I'd be happy to address them.
Did you comment that there was gonna be, sorry, Keith, may I ask a question?
Please, sir, you're good.
Um, did you comment that there was gonna be lots less than fifteen thousand square feet, or that was the smallest that you were going down?
No, yeah, sorry, that, that we, we can't exceed that limit. That's, we've got to be above fifteen thousand square feet. But in that fifteen thousand to sixteen thousand square foot range, we have eleven lots in that range, and the rest exceed that. I was just trying to point out that there are a lot of lots in here that are above the fifteen thousand square foot range. So that's, but yeah, they're all at least fifteen thousand or larger.
Okay, thank you.
Those few will be able to have chickens, just saying.
Totally random.
Keith?
Yes.
Um, there have been some comments. Water. Um, so, which we already know. Um, we are reading the comments for all of you guys that are on YouTube. We are hearing the water. I promise, we're, we're looking at those. Um, MD Custom Engraving LLC. He said, this is Michael Dickamore on the development map. It's, so it's just north of, um, this project. Said the dirt lane is owned by him and two other owners. Um, they have been approached about this. The second, second, the water retention pond will not accommodate the amount of water that is building up. The access to eighty-nine that I and my neighbor Paul Hanson use will become a safety hazard for us to get to our homes. Um, previously with this project, I don't know. Um, Brian, if you've spoken to them, and I would, from what we were understanding, nothing's changed. But previously Kevin actually spoke to these homeowners and because with the access on to eighty-nine, that Budge Farms, or not Budge Farms, Budge Lane, um, would be, have to be closed. And I'm assuming that still is not changing because we haven't heard anything different. Um, have you talked to these owners?
No, no, I haven't, but I'd be happy to.
Why would Budge Lane have to be closed? It looks like it runs uh, north of the subdivision.
Could you put that map back up, please?
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
And just give me one second.
It's coming. Or maybe, uh, Budge, uh, will continue to be open. This, um, this subdivision doesn't actually, uh, you can kind of see the gravel line there just on the left side. Or not that one, but over by the, uh, by the, the, the left bulb.
Um, while you're looking at that, why is there only a partial turnaround at the end of that road? How come that's not a full cul-de-sac? Yes.
That's actually going to be a road road. It's, it was gonna be a bulb from the previous engineer approved it. This one, we've actually talked and, um, Brian and Jim, we're not gonna do the bulb. A permanent bulb. It's gonna be a temporary turnaround, so that way it'll just flow straight into Phase Two.
So that will go away.
Yeah. Yes.
And, and Sarah, the reason why that, that had to be that way is because, because at the time, we didn't have, um, that second parcel for Phase Two purchased. That is now, we, we now have that parcel purchased. Um, and so we, we'd be happy to get rid of that bulb and, and want to. It's better for that lot owner, and I think for the city, less maintenance and that, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was in compliance with our standards and, and, and I know that partial turnarounds are not what we allow necessarily unless they're temporary and have road base and they're not going to stay there. So.
So Budge Lane, this road, yeah, where's this road we're looking for?
Yeah, if you see it, it goes down here and it turns and it goes down here.
Okay, so.
It's right next to fifteen hundred.
So why would that need to be closed?
Having two streets right there. Jim?
And there's not a, isn't there like a grandfather clause, or when somebody has an entryway there to their property? Doesn't UDOT?
It would be like Pleasant View Drive with Serenity. You can't keep two roads like that right next to each other for traffic issues. You can't.
It, it creates a safety issue for those that are trying to turn any direction.
But how, but how do they access their property then? Because I, I didn't know, I didn't know by law that you could.
Didn't, didn't we talk, didn't, when they came in for zoning, didn't we say, didn't we, Jill, when they came in for the zoning, we said that that was one of the stipulations, is they were gonna have to talk to those property owners?
Yeah.
And create an access to them because we brought up the fact that those two roads were too close to each other for UDOT. Because actually, in our master general plan, this road is actually, I don't like it, but this is actually earmarked for one of the stoplights in the master plan for eighty-nine. Even though I think Jacob's Mill should be the one, but this is the earmark for the stoplight. Well, they're not gonna let a stoplight be right next to a Budge's Lane.
But, but I don't, I don't know how we can approve something that is going to end up denying somebody access to their property that they have had for probably.
They needed to pre-arrange.
A hundred years.
The access will be changed to a different spot. They're not gonna have access closed off. They'll just have to adjust where the access is, like Serenity.
So where is it?
That's what I'd like to see.
Again, it, they wouldn't have gotten it permitted to have both of them open with UDOT because it's entering on UDOT's road. So the agreement should have had to have said, okay, with having this huge road, you have to close this other one.
Then we can't approve it until we see what, where, or how that's gonna be done then.
Can you point to the houses that are affected by this? Like, are, can you point to the houses that use that road? One, two?
Yep, that, those are the two.
Just two? There's not one up further?
No. Do you, do you have an agreement, Jill? Is there an agreement that you have?
I have the permit from UDOT.
So does it explain in there where the access point will be for those existing lots?
No, Jim. The original agreement with Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, was gonna be up here. Have access from up here to the two lot houses.
I remember vetting it with UDOT and, um, I actually remember some pushback from the owners that they really didn't want a driveway coming off of the new public road. And, um, so they're, they're keeping their existing entrance.
Which is, so, so my, the, if, if I may, I just want to ask a question. Where is their entrance going to be if that one is going away? Shouldn't that be spelled out?
So you, so you're not allowing them to have this entry right next to the public road that close?
Yes, they are.
Can you show us the agreement? We, can we see that agreement?
Thought I heard somebody say that that had to be closed because.
That's what it was talked about last time.
That's, that's a safety hazard. I, I don't want my kids using that road. And, and the, the homeowner just said that that was a hazard for him, too.
Yep. He just, he just put a note saying UDOT has never spoken to him. No, no one's talked to him about it.
We're gonna table tonight.
It, it looks like there could be a number of solutions, including going up the new road, heading across at the top of the pond that's going to be there, have a road there that would then give access. But you know, that, that's not for us to determine. But I, but, but I'm very uncomfortable. Um, I don't know.
So do you have an agreement?
That, that may leave to current property owners without access to their property.
Let me ask a question, can I please?
Yeah, of course.
Brian? Access. I'm sorry.
Brian, have you addressed this at all? Has UDOT mentioned to you that this Budge Lane will have to be closed?
So we, um, Keith, we were, first of all, we, we cannot deny property access, property owners' access to their own property. So there's, that's, that's off the table. That's not our intent here. Um, number two, I was going off of the assumption that UDOT has approved this and reviewed a lot of the safety standards, which I think is still accurate, but I have, I wasn't in the details of this discussion when it was approved. This was approved over a year ago. And we just recently had UDOT, um, uh, indicate that it was, it, it's been re-approved, so we can, we can go ahead and build this. I don't know, Jim, if you have any more background on this. I was just pulling up that agreement and you're happy, I'm happy, I think we actually sent this to Jill, so it's a public record. Uh, Sarah, the, the city has it. Um, we'd be happy to, to share that with you. And, uh, Jim, can you provide any more background or context on this, on this discussion?
Yeah, I can. Um, the first thing is that that entrance isn't, isn't gonna be closed. Nobody's gonna get cut off from their existing access.
Okay.
Um, I, do you have a copy of the agreement, Jill? Is there, do you have it spelled out in agreement that says how these people will have the access that UDOT has approved it, everybody signed off it? Do you have something? Some sort of documentation that has everybody's signatures that says this is what's gonna happen?
I don't have one with the resident signatures, no. I have the permit approved from UDOT.
Just heard early on, somebody said that, that Budge Lane would have to be closed.
That was the discussion that we've had previously with this subdivision. So, I.
So without a remedy for these property owners, I don't see how we can push this any farther until we have a certain clarity as to how we allow the existing homeowners to maintain the frontage of their homes.
Yeah.
Let me, let me understand what the real problem is. Budge Lane is, um, we originally had proposed as a cul-de-sac, not extending all the way to the left there. So we're actually affording futuristic access for the existing Budge Lane residents. But Budge Lane is gonna continue in operation. That's not gonna be coming from Pleasant View Drive. There's nothing in this subdivision that determines that. As far as the, um, the entrance next to the fifteen hundred West connection, that entrance is a paved road that ties into those two residences. That stays operative. There's nothing that impairs the operational. No, nobody is cutting those people off from having, from the, utilizing their existing entrance.
But you have to see, you have to see the hazard in in having two entrances right there. Like two, you have to see that there is potential traffic.
Yeah, the city didn't allow it in Serenity, so why would we allow it here? Uh, we're speaking in hypotheticals here. What is actually fact, not we don't, we don't see it happening? We can't, you know, nobody's gonna do that. I want, I, if I were on the commission, I'd say, show me the, show me the money, show me the paper that says this is what it's gonna be.
I have concern.
I have a question. How, how did this get through Planning Commission and approved by Planning, or recommended approval by Planning Commission and approved by City Council two years ago? With, with the way that that's designed?
Which part? The roads.
The, these two roads. How, how did?
It wasn't, there, there was a stipulation, there was a stipulation the Budge Lane had to be addressed before the preliminary was approved.
It didn't go through, Keith's right.
All right, Jill, your turn.
Okay, one. To answer Jeff's question. It got approved. There was a stipulation with the whole Budge Farms. However, or the Budge Lane. Are you asking about the cul-de-sacs, the permanent cul-de-sacs? Jeff?
No, I'm asking about these two roads as it's drawn on that plat. As it is, that, that's, my understanding is that plat was approved by Pla, City Council.
It, it was approved by Planning Commission and City Council. However, there was a different engineer that was fine with this and recommended that we approved it. However, it wasn't.
Upon further review.
Upon further review, it is.
That was zoning, that was zoning.
City standards.
That was zoning only, not for the actual plot, right?
That's.
Nope. Phil brought this before you guys. I wanna say, I wanna say it was the end of two thousand eighteen and went through City Council the beginning of two thousand nineteen.
So you're gonna have to pull the minutes on that, Jill, because I remember this, and I remember the Budge Lane and, and, uh, and what Jeff is saying, exactly right. None of us felt comfortable about those two roads. In fact, we was pretty certain that UDOT would not allow that.
And that's, that's where my concern is, is I, I've actually talked with UDOT on multiple sub, multiple projects and having, they don't allow for roads being that close entering onto eighty-nine. So that's where if they permitted it, I know that they wouldn't necessarily allow this. That's why I now have a concern, so.
May I ask?
Let's hear from Nate first, Sarah.
Jill, can you tell us, is that a, a dedicated city street? Or is it an access? Point?
On fifteen hundred, right here?
The one that we were talking about, the, that goes to the two residents.
Budge Lane is a private road. It's not ours. If it was, if it was to be the cities, it would have to be widened and it has.
I see it more as an access point to Highway eighty-nine than a road. We gotta stop calling it a road. If it's not, if it's, the city's not maintaining it, it's an access. It's somebody's driveway onto Highway eighty-nine. So it's not a road. It's not a city. The, the, the public's not using that access.
Here's a question, though, Nate. You know on Serenity, that driveway that comes out onto Pleasant View Drive? Part of the approval for Serenity was the requirement for that driveway to be closed off and tied into the new road.
Okay, I, I, I see that as a totally different project.
So Nate, I agree with you a hundred percent, and nobody has said anything about this being a public road, but the concern is if Highway eighty-nine, if UDOT grants fifteen hundred as a access, are they going to allow, uh, an unpaved lane so close to a very busy uh, entrance?
I don't, I, I, I'm not speaking for UDOT, but I, I would say that UDOT probably looks at that as not a road. It's an access. It's a, it's a driveway for somebody's house.
So Jill, back to the clarification. You better get something in writing from UDOT saying that it's, that it's acceptable. There's no safety concerns. There's no legal or liability issues. And then Jim, I have a question for you. You're talking about a paved road that is not interfering with these two homes. Show me where that paved road is.
I'm talking about the driveway. Uh, there, there are three things that are important to know. The Paul Hanson residence and the, uh, and the, and the Glenn Dickamore residence, those two that you see there.
Yes.
They, uh, they bolt to access off that private driveway. That, the first is that road doesn't really connect to the west, to the, to the Budge Lane coming down. So there's not really through traffic going through here. Early on, we did have a, the second point is early on, we did have discussion with UDOT about possibly eliminating that, that driveway to those two residences by putting a driveway across lot fifteen right there, a little bit lower. And my understanding at that time was that the two owners objected to. Objected to that. They didn't want to lose. They preferred to have their uh. Driveway access just like it is, rather than especially Hanson, he didn't want to go back. Kind of do a circuitous way to get to get out of his. Out of the the access route that he's used to. Then the the third thing was um. This project is providing actually six interconnecting. Stubbs. Or interconnecting streets. So it's a very. It it it's a very rich. Generous subdivision trying to make as many connections as possible. But at the end of the day, when you dot. It was a combination of uh. My understanding of the homeowner didn't want a driveway. That would force him to close his existing entrance. If I'm wrong, the. Paul Hanson and Dickamore can correct me. And the second thing was.
I understand a lot about prescriptive rights. And I'm telling you right now. The city will lose. Any kind of a case if we're asked to shut that lane down without. Allowing an access to those residents home. We'd have to something writing from you dot saying that can be a lane and we don't care. I guess I'm concerned and and Jill, back to the minutes in twenty eighteen. We had the same discussion complete.
Well, let me um, I want to be able to provide you whatever you need. Um. It's the fear that. By this project being implemented, that somehow Hanson and Dickamore are going to be shut down by you dot.
That's that's what I understand the fear is.
Okay, well, I needed to clear, I need to get that clarified. That's not the case, but whatever we need to do to. Get that clarification, I'm happy to do it.
Budge Lane comes off of Pleasant View Drive. All the way straight down to Highway eighty nine.
Connected right there. It is connected right there?
It's connected. Um. Let me give you a different picture. So someone pointed that out on uh our YouTube comments and he, they are actually correct.
It's a dirt road that goes from Pleasant View Drive all the way down, but it goes through. Their property. It's not a public ass access. It's a private dirt road that goes all the way down.
Private access road. So it it does go from Pleasant View Drive down to Highway eighty nine. Who accesses it? I don't know.
Between the lane and the road? That we calculated that. Twenty feet.
Feet or so, I think, sixty feet.
Sixty feet.
How? How much distance does anyone know? Does it? Is standard, like instead of making your road curve? I know you're trying to connect it to the other road to have maybe a stoplight there, so never mind. But in theory, if you made it straight. And did a lot of work to like redraw it, would that be far enough or? That's not.
Are there standards that you dot allows between access points? Nate, you would know that, wouldn't you? Seven hundred feet?
It's it depends on the volume, traffic volume. It depends on classification of the road. There's a lot of factors going to play.
Highway eighty nine's pretty busy, so.
But I I'll be honest with you, you dot doesn't see this. They they view these two homes as an access, like of somebody's driveway. You know, it's it's uh similar to a corner lot. You know, coming off of Jacob's Mill onto a busy road. That's the way they look at it.
So they don't take that into account when putting in a major, like a sixty foot road?
Yeah, well. That, again, that. That that uh, the two homes that we're talking about, you dot probably have used those as. Just a residential access point onto eighty nine. It's not a road, so.
I agree.
Would they allow the sixty foot road, though, to be placed so close to that access point? That's my question.
Let's call it a driveway. Would they allow it to be placed that close to a driveway?
Your road like that.
Apparently, they've reviewed it and approved it, so I don't know.
You got that letter, Jill?
I've got the permit. Saying that and.
I I I honestly, I I think what needs to happen is. We need to, as a city, we need. Some type of agreement or some type of clarification between the two, the. The developer and the two property owners to that we're talking about. You know, I I'm almost to of the opinion, I think you dot is fine with this. It's more of an agreement or in this, you know, inconvenience for the two property owners. And and we want to make sure that. The developer and the two property owners to the north. Are happy with whatever arrangement has been banned.
I would agree with you.
I I agree. Whether it's not classified as a road and it's an access point. By putting in the new road, it is creating. An increased dangerous situation for those property owners. And so I think they have to be brought in the mix.
All all of those.
For a solution.
I think the development agreement, or not the development agreement, the agreement that Nate was saying, you know, between the developer and the two owners. I mean, that's.
I I agree.
They've uh, we'll certainly uh work with them. If you look at that map that Jill has right now in thirty eight hundred, that address. That little access right there where your cursor is. That's actually blocked from going further, that area right there. No, you keep going around the, keep going there. Go to the, go back to the east corner of thirty eight hundred. That right there going to the highway. There's actually been. Vehicles and whatever pertinences there that. That that's not a through road, is what I'm saying. And we're happy to uh. The fifteen hundred connection is a very important connection that. Is established by you dot the location. So it's a matter of if we need to accommodate. Those two homeowners, if they're willing to give away their current access. And that would be uh something that could be discussed.
And I agree with Jim, the 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 development benefits the city. The the improvements that they're trying to do here, the connections, there's a lot of benefit to see this subdivision go in.
I don't think anyone disagrees with that. I think we all see the benefit of it. I think we're just concerned about just that one thing of. The safety of that. Tiny road that has been there forever. Wasn't there.
I just got some information from Dana, who's the engineer. She she said she doesn't think that we were supposed to close it. She's reading what she can. She think. She said you dot approved the new road with the driveway next to it. So again, that's like why they permitted it. That's why we've got the permit. Um, saying that they can access Highway eighty nine. Um. So. They were fully aware that that driveway is there. Again, it goes back to Nate saying it's an access road. We get it. Safety thing, you know, safety wise, I don't know if you want to. Table this until they can get. An agreement with both of the. I don't know what you guys want to do, or if you want to approve it. Tinge on something or deny it. I really don't know what.
So let me throw this out. You dot's pretty. Pretty strict when it comes to safety and liability.
Yes.
If they bought off on this lane, Budge Lane, as just being a driveway and not being a hindrance. Or a problem to fifteen hundred, then it's a mute point. But if it's something that you dot has overlooked, or they're, they haven't paid any attention to, then it's a very. It's a high. Uh area of concern. Is that is that safe? Is that a fair statement?
One option here is to approve this subdivision. Contingent on some type of agreement. With these two property owners.
If you read the comments on YouTube and and obviously these people who own that property are very concerned, I think that that would be what Nate suggested, a very. Good faith gesture and appropriate.
Can we take it one step? Can we? I like Nate's comments. I like the the wording of that is that we. That we, I would possibly say we table it till we see if there can be an agreement between the two landowners. And the developer, and we also make sure that. That the you dot agreement included that they did actually. Review it with that. That uh access point next to that road, because the one thought is. The access part, the the new road will have a de-acceleration lane, but how does we know that someone's not de-accelerating so they can get off of? Onto that access point. So I mean, to me, there's quite a collision point, and that was something that we discussed a couple of years ago. So I'm just wondering if we, can we have those, could possibly, could we table this until those two items are discussed? One, the landowners get together, and two, we make sure that you dot did clarify that when they approved this point.
Or can we uh motion to approve with that contingency? That there's an agreement between the city. The city, the developer, and the two property owners and you dot.
I I would favor that.
I would favor that.
Uh, how do you do that? The, does that have to happen before it goes to City Council then? Sure, it or if it doesn't happen, then. It can't go any further because it's got that contingency on it.
It won't come to City Council until that.
We don't need to push this for the developer.
They don't have to come back to us again if they get it approved, like they got through us, we say yes, if this. Then they move on.
And it doesn't come to City Council until all of that's taken care of, because it can't be a recommendation to the City Council until the. Conditions have been met.
Okay, I I was just wanting to clarify that. That sounds fair.
And Brian, it would behoove you to contact these two property owners.
That's my first call tomorrow morning, Keith. That's my first call tomorrow morning. Um, the the one, I guess, the only thought. I I I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate the information. I apologize for uh not having uh buttoned this issue down. Um, it's it's kind of frankly embarrassing. Um, and I apologize. Uh. The the one thing that I will um say is, it sounds like there's a lot of information that needs to be addressed. Understanding, there's a lot of kind of facts that are floating out that are um in contradiction to each other, and and so I guess. The only concern that I have is um. By all accounts, these these landowners are very reasonable and will be able to work something out. I would just hate for um a project that's this important. And it clearly has that connection to fifteen hundred west across the street, so we really don't have. A lot of latitude in terms of where we can move this connection. Um, I I guess the only concern that I have is that if if for whatever reason I've been in situations where landowners become unreasonable. An agreement with those folks uh might be a difficult or impossible despite our best efforts to provide. Some of the suggestions that have been brought up here tonight with um, you know, reasonable approaches. I guess what I'm asking for is that this this. Um, I guess I don't know exactly what I'm asking for, but a conditional approval upon an agreement with these property owners. Might be impossible for us to get to, and I would hate for this project to not get approved based on that, so. Um, I guess I'm just saying, what would be a reasonable approach short of. Uh, an acceptable agreement to these property owners with you dot's approval and and again, assuming that they've looked at this driveway. Um, I I'm not trying to get away from talking to property owners, and again, that will be my first call regardless of what happens here tonight. Because it's not our uh attempt to go around making enemies, but at the same time, I don't want to be beholden if if we can't work something out.
Well, I think if you are going to approve it. Then it is to their, the property owner's best interest to work something out with you so they have a safer. Like if you dot approves it and we have a letter that says that and they specifically have looked at Budge Lane, I. I think. These owners see that, then they're more willing to work with you, like, oh, crap, we want to stay alive, and so we'll.
I think it's in your best interest to try really hard, because they're watching, just so you know, all of them are on this right now.
Right, no, I'm I'm.
Not that that should matter, but it does matter because you you want to be good neighbors and.
Absolutely.
And I I Jill, I would, me personally, before this ever comes to City Council, I would like to see the details of that permit. And see what it says, and also. Um, it it me, before it comes to me at City Council, so but. Commission can do what at, you know, what they want at their pleasure, but I think it, I I think Nate's suggestion is spot on.
If if the property owners. If the property owners are okay with keeping their current access. And you dot has reviewed it and deems it. Safe. Then we need to back off and say, okay, every every I's been dotted and every T's been crossed, and we accept. You dots and the property owners, all the developer and the two property owners. You know, like the developers saying, you know, I may not get a letter. A a written letter from the property owners that says this is okay. But if they still have access to Highway eighty nine. And it doesn't interfere their to their access to their home, and you dot's okay with the proximity of the access to the. New street. Then we have to be, we have to accept it.
Just worry, what if, is there any way to sue someone if there is an accident? That happened because of this thing that if if they, if everyone says yes and we keep both roads and an accident happens.
And it's on you dot for approving it.
It's you dot's road and they have the final say.
That's one of the reasons why we require. If anything is to have access to you dot's roads, which would be Highway eighty nine or twenty seven hundred, that they have to have. A permit before we even come before you guys at all.
It's on you, Ashley. The city, that Jill's absolutely right.
Thank you. I just. Okay.
Motion then at this time that we approve or deny the application, I would certainly include. That we have an agreement spelled out between the developer and. Um, you dot. And preferably the property owners as well. So that means in my mind's eye is that we approach the property owners, we offer them um. Another access or like Jim mentioned, the uh, an approach. You know, after the retention pond, put a little road in or an access so they can have access to their property. If they refuse to go along with any of it, then. I think the motion carries because. We're covering our bases by saying. You dot's approved it, the developers approved it, the city's okay with it, and it's. What's the Latin? It is what it is. The theme speaks for itself.
Down your due process, voila.
Yeah.
Very very fair.
I say yes to that. Can we motion that?
I can't, but you can.
Can I say I motion that the way you said it with those things that you said?
Here you go. Keith, call for a motion and on what you said, and Ashley can say so moved, voila.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we. Recommend to the City Council to approve. Budge Farm Phase One Preliminary Subdivision Thirty Lots on the parcels identified in the. Uh agenda. Located at fifteen hundred west between Pleasant View Drive and Highway eighty nine. And contingently, we have a letter. Stating from you dot that they're aware of the Budge Lane. And that we are going to try our hardest to mitigate. Any liability or safety concerns with the property owners.
And add the water discussion, please.
Excuse me?
Add the water discussion.
And and certainly, I think the water's already in there, isn't it, Jill? On your staff.
Be part of the um engineering, but if you want to be specific, you can add the water issue.
Okay, then we'll add the water issue as well. So I'm not making that motion, but that's the verbiage. If somebody will make it.
Sarah said I can say so moved. So moved.
So Ashley's making the motion. To approve with the recommendations that have been spelled out. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes.
Dear priest, I I just wanted to make sure I understood the water issue is broad. Um, and I just want to make sure we understood that so that we could try to address that. I think based on Andy's earlier comments and conversation. Was that we're just making sure that the sizing of the pipe that connects into the existing fifteen hundred south or fifteen hundred west. Is of sufficient size to accommodate the water and the inlets that would be coming off that road that's the existing development. Is that, did I get that right?
Yes, and. Yes, and, and that it also, if I might, Keith, and it also meets the staff requirements for the rest of the subdivision also, that it meets the requirements as staff, as outlined.
So Brian, just to spell it out, if the engineer buys off on it, you're good.
Okay, I, because I think, Jill, am I wrong in saying that Dana is okay with what we've got designed?
Dana's just verifying, making sure all the little fine tunes, but if there's any comments, we would let you know again.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second? We have a second as well. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Good luck and please keep a surprise, Jill, as to what's going on with this. Can you please?
You bet. I'll send an email out pretty quick. As soon as I can get information.
Good luck, Brian. I'd approach those property owners ASAP and try to work something out with them. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item three, discussion, decision, updated policies and procedures for the planning commission.
Yes. Um, and just so you're aware, after this, I will send you a copy of the permit so you have a copy. We usually don't put that in there, but yes.
Are we still on YouTube?
Yes.
Is it ever closed after we're through with public business?
At the very end when, yeah.
Okay, I was just, just curious. All right, go ahead. Update policies, procedures for planning commission.
Hopefully you were able to look through everything. I, I highlighted the things that we changed or that I propose a change and let me explain why. So let me share this. Just so you can see my list of exactly what I changed. I'm asking if we can change the attendance from sixty to seventy-five. That way I have a better shot that we don't have any issues of a form. That's the only reason. So.
I thought it was already at seventy-five.
No, it wasn't.
Currently sixty?
Yep. So I did some calculations so you guys can see how many meetings unless we add to it. Normally we have twenty-two meetings. So if you attend seventeen out of twenty-two, you're perfectly fine. But here's the reason with the whole attendance. And they, again, it goes back to making sure we have a forum. We've got to have at least four out of you guys and there's nine of you guys. We put two alternates because there's technically only seven, um, to kind of help with the attendance to make sure we can get these applications to at least be seen whether, however it's voted. And if we don't have a quorum, then I have to push all of whatever's on the agenda to the next one. And to be fair, it's not very easy to call the applicant, especially if I don't hear from anybody until the day of. Sorry, we're gonna have to wait two more weeks. So.
I understand completely and I agree with you. I think it's, it behooves us to take our um, responsibilities as serious as possible. We all know things come up. We all know emergencies come up. We all know family gatherings come up. We get it, but it's also on our calendars, the first and third. So if we can just schedule accordingly, then there shouldn't be a problem. But I do agree with Jill and I've seen it happen a few times where we're canceling things at the last moment and that's.
And I hate it.
That's very.
Instead of telling you we're gonna be there, I feel like we should tell you if we can't be there.
And I'm fine with that.
Well, I just feel like that should be like spoken and said, this is how, you know what I'm saying? Like, I just think it'll be easier for you. Because on my end, I'm, you're always emailing me, are you gonna be there? I'm like, yes, I didn't know. I didn't say yes, um.
And I do that if I can get you guys to make sure you're there.
It should be an expectation that you should shut it. City council, we don't have to check in to say we're not coming, that we're not, that we are coming. It's an expectation that we're going to be there. The only time that we ever say anything is when we're not going to be there.
I think that's how to deal with this.
Am I getting consensus from everyone saying that they will be there unless they tell me otherwise?
You should have everyone say aye so you have it on the record.
We're, we're going to vote on this. Well, not we, you are going to be voting on this.
Alicia?
I vote that's a great idea.
I'm happy with that.
I'm doing, I'm doing a roll call here. Dean? Okay, Jeff? Jim? Jim?
Oh yeah, Jim. Uh, yeah, I vote for that. I think I told Jill at one time, uh, assume I'll be there and I think almost all the time I am.
Most of the time you are.
You're good. Nate?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next slide.
So in the policy procedure, it says that we're going to elect the chair and vice chair at the very first of the meeting. I think it's better do, idea to do at the very end of the year, just so that way when we start the new meeting, we know who's already going to be the chair and we can just kind of roll with punches. That's one thing.
That's how we've done in the past.
Yes. So I'm just updating the formality of the form. Um, we added Zoom to the sheet because we've been doing Zoom most of the year. Um, so I'm just gonna put it out there. We added to be professional and on time and I understand, you know, hey Jill, I'm gonna be late. That's fine. Um, one thing, I've gone to hundreds of Zooms, you know, with all my meetings, watching people. I don't know if I do this. I don't know if we realize we do certain things. Um, so all I ask is when we're on Zoom to make sure we're professional, we're not chewing with their mouth open. You know, or taking the phone into the bathroom. No joke, I was at the meeting and I saw that. That was kind of awkward. Um.
Nate, that apple looked real good, by the way.
Nate, um, also with being professional, we are representatives of the city. You know, you are the commission for the city. Um, make sure when we do have applicants or questions or concerns, these, these questions or concerns, both of the, you know, of the residents or of fellow commissioners or the applicant itself. They might not know what you know or vice versa, so we need to make sure we are, you know, empathetic for and really try and help them understand or understand what their concerns are. And also make sure that we don't laugh at people over, um, Zoom. Other than that, I think that's all the changes that we've made on the policy and procedures. So are you guys good with all these changes?
Yes, I just changed your verbiage on the uh, professional manner. Did you say proper decorum is expected?
I can't promise that I won't laugh with people. I can't promise that I won't giggle, but not at someone rudely. I just have that personality. Okay.
You've laughed at me for years. What do you mean?
I know, but not like at you, not mean, I hope.
We have to have a giggle, uh, addition to it.
Yes.
I think it makes it more.
You can, you can giggle, but just make sure it's in a, um, a good way.
A good time, not at anyone. Okay, got it.
Well, everybody's good with those changes?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with those changes. I would like to, to just ask you, Jill, that if you ever identify anything that I'm doing that crosses that line, I actually would appreciate just a personal call or an email to be aware of it. I would certainly not be offended and in fact would take it as an opportunity to do better, um, because maybe things can be very subjective on what is considered proper decorum. And I think any, any feedback is beneficial.
I'm gonna get fired, guys. I don't know.
So going forward, if, if I see something that I honestly have concerns, I'll, I'll reach out to you personally and say, hey, I don't know, this kind of concerned me, just so you know. So I'm not gonna say it out in public.
I, I have to share a story.
Oh, boy.
The, the high school came out with Zoom etiquette for the students. And I strongly believe that it was partly because of my own son. I told him he had to stop attending classes with his shirt off.
Are you serious?
The same day, the same day, they came out with the Zoom etiquette, so.
There you go.
I think that would be kind of a, a given where, you know, clothes.
Please wear clothes.
He, he's sixteen. He didn't think about it.
Okay, Jill?
Next. We need to finalize our meeting, um, dates for twenty twenty-one. As crazy as it sounds, it's just around the corner. In January, can we change it to the second and third or second and fourth Thursday? I won't be able to present on the seventh.
Fine with me.
Anybody have any problems with that?
That's fine with me.
Keith.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So February, March are normal, the first and third, April. Spring break's the first week and I know the past, we, we struggled getting enough people, so.
I hope to be gone for spring break if we're allowed to be, but we'll see.
Me too.
Fingers crossed.
You're allowed to be.
All for a coat.
Are you guys good with going for the second and fourth? There are five weeks in April, so it wouldn't throw it off too much. Okay, and then May and June, July, August and September, again, third and first and third, nothing kind of came up with those. Um, October though, there's only four weeks. Um, again, who knows what's gonna happen in October. Um, we usually have our conference the first week of October and then UEA I'm assuming maybe on the twenty-first.
So are you suggesting only one meeting in October?
Do you want to do one meeting or do you want to switch it to the second and the fourth week?
Do you want me to? UEA is always the third week.
And that's the third week.
Trouble of saying one.
So do you guys want to do one meeting in October or do you want to do it the second and the fourth week of October?
And you're saying the conference is usually that first week too? So would we do that and the conference?
Yep.
So Jill, we're gonna rely on you because you put the agenda together. I guess it depends on how many applicants there are and how much that'll push you and staff if we only have one meeting instead of two. Because we know we're only gonna have one in November and one in December. So I think it's fair to say, let's let you make that determination when the time comes. One is okay, but if two's needed, we'll just work it out.
Are you guys good with that? We'll do October seventh. We'll leave the twenty-first off. If we need to add another one, we'll either do it the second or the fourth. That way we're not messing with your guys' UEA. Does that work?
Good plan.
And if Keith is feeling better, can he come to the conference anyway?
I'll come to the conference. It's a lot of fun.
So, and then November fourth and December second. You're, you guys are good with that? Can you vote to make sure this is okay? Cause we, we're supposed to vote.
Okay, Alicia?
Okay.
Trouble? Jeff?
I'm good.
Jim?
It's a go.
Nate?
Yes.
Alicia? Or I said Alicia, Ashley?
Alicia, Ashley? Yes.
There you go. Thank you. Julie?
Uh, yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Hey. There you go.
Okay, last piece. Chair and vice chair. I know.
That's why we don't want to be on YouTube.
So what makes a good chair is someone that's gonna be passionate about their work, really prepares for the meetings. You know, what you guys do, read the, um, packets and you know, wants to be able to or will be able to focus on doing the things correctly versus I don't know what the word is. I guess the good old boys club or we know this person, so even though the losses, we go this way, you know, just make sure we do the right thing, encourages good discussion, but helps you know, keep us on track and not let the ball keep rolling and get us in trouble. Does that make sense?
Got big shoes to fill, just saying.
Yes. Um.
In other words, do everything contrary to what I've been doing.
That's not at all. Amazing chair.
A chair also, um, I send agendas too. Sorry, Keith, I haven't been, yeah. I've been kind of spaced, going everywhere with everything. Um, I usually send the agenda, make sure, you know, so they're aware what's coming, that they're okay with it.
Oh, you always send it out. You haven't missed.
Okay, good, because I can't remember what I did yesterday.
No, you always send approval.
And then, so we'll need a chair and then a vice chair. Vice chair does, you know, is a good backup for the chair when the chair's not there and kind of helps back them up while we're in the meeting to kind of bring order if we need to. Um, if there's any issues that arise. Um, so you guys get to choose who you feel would be a good chair and vice chair, unfortunately.
Jill, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Does, does the mayor have any sort of recommendation in this at all in the rules?
We haven't before.
Okay, just wondering.
We haven't had, the last two years that I've done it, Bill hasn't asked him at all.
You might want to, just so you know. But it's none of my business. Whatever the rules say, that's, I'm just, it's.
According to our policy and procedure that planning.
Then you're good. It's none of my business.
So.
Well, you, she, I just was confused about what Sarah just asked.
Sarah asked if the mayor has any input.
Okay, thank you.
But.
So in the years that I've been here, he has not, he or she has not. That's not to say that you can't make that change. Just before you move on, let me say I wished, I wished we were face to face. I mean, I'll be the first to admit that coronavirus is really kind of weird and it's turned all of our roles upside down. And just as an FYI, my wife and I both tested positive Monday of this week. So we're, we're dealing with that and, and it's okay. I mean, it's, it's going through just fine, but it's kind of funny. You, you watch the news, you see all this stuff going on and all the conversation. And I just told my wife last night as they had on the lead off to the nightly news, I said, you realize all of this that we've been listening about for ten months, we are now there. We are those people. Just kind of brought reality to morality, I guess. But I, what I was saying is I wished I could look each one of you in the eye and say, thank you for your professionalism, for your friendship, for your support of the city, for everything you've done. I, I mean this from the bottom of my heart. We have a great planning commission. We really do. Every one of you are concerned. You can tell by the engagement, by the. Every one of you are concerned. You can tell by the engagement, by the conversation. It's just, it's been a privilege and a, and a not just a privilege to serve with each of you. Thank you. Now you can make your motions.
Are we making nominations right now? Is that what he said?
Or like tearful motions, motions of.
I wanna make a motion that he has to stay.
I'd like, that's what, yes, I will second that motion. Sorry, sorry Keith. Sorry.
Can, can, can he just take a sabbatical for like, he's allowed to miss five, like, no.
Doesn't a Zoom follow him wherever he's at? I thought we're uh.
You know, you guys are making it hard because I'm half tempted to say, nah, never mind. I'll stay. And I might do that. I don't know. I had really mixed feelings.
Why don't, why don't you give him another few weeks or a month for, I mean, you might just breeze through COVID like a lot of people have.
No, we're, yeah, we're already on the downside of COVID. I'm okay. All right. I'm so embarrassed. I'm humbled. No, I'm considering withdrawing my resignation.
I make the nomination that you withdraw your resignation.
I second that.
Okay, there we go.
I make a motion, he takes as much time as he needs and attends when he can.
That's right.
That's good. Oh, he did say considering. Did you all hear that?
Yeah.
He said considering it now, so I'm just.
Consider is that we have an excellent vice chair. Oh, no, no, Jim's gonna be the chairman then.
Uh, we, we've got a great vice chair, um.
I think, I think Keith should be our chairman again if he's gonna stick around.
Um, you know, Jill, what about um, a lot of times when there are, are expectations on attending so many meetings? Um, there are also other caveats like for illnesses or other things, almost a sabbatical sort of thing when needed for special circumstances. Could, could we have something like that also put in? You know, that if there are circumstances that somebody has a more serious illness or um, really a legitimate reason why they can't attend.
But we can't live without them, so.
But yeah, but you know, I don't know. Just a thought.
Well, if you guys wanna put that in the policy, that, you know, we can do that. Um.
I just think that's a humane thing. I don't think you have to put it in the policy. I mean, if people are going through health issues and and, and with mine, it's not a, I mean, there's no cancer, nothing.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, so it's an illness that is eating away my muscles.
Oh, no.
From my limbs inward, so it's not, there's no cure and it's not reversible. The theory is if I can maintain what I have, it won't get any worse. That's the theory. But I've already lost fifty percent of the muscle mass on my right side and twenty-five on my left. So, but I'm gonna keep working. I mean, I enjoy the planning commission. I've just felt like maybe after three years, it's time to give somebody else a chance, but I confess, I I enjoy the camaraderie and the responsibility and so, whatever that's worth.
One thing to keep in mind, we have a rotation. And I talked to the mayor and the mayor said, if they wanna resign, go for it, we'll figure something out. But if they wanna stay, he is more than happy to reappoint them, cause he says we have a good thing going. So.
If, if Keith's willing to stay, then I say we keep him as our chairman for one more year and finish what we've got going, cause we got a lot to finish this year.
Yes, we do.
On, on the other hand, hearing Keith share his circumstances, if those circumstances change at any point and you feel that the planning commission is one more thing and it's detrimental to your health, it's detrimental to other things that you wanna take care of with your family, that you wanna take more vacations, that you don't want to be held to a certain parameter of attendance, then we all love you and we would fully support you going on and retiring.
And if you decide that you wanna take a break and a few years you wanna come back on, you know, you can talk to the mayor and see if there's an opening.
Oh, we've made an opening.
Well, you guys are kind and now I'll stay on for a year as long as Andy's on his second, if that's okay. I'll make that recommendation.
Do you need to talk to your wife first, though? I'm being, I'm like, I don't want any mad wives coming knocking on my door.
She didn't even know.
If your feelings change at any point, um, we are fully supportive.
I appreciate that and to be honest with you, it's probably gonna be a good thing for my mental awareness to associate with such good people. So, thank you.
Oh my word, I'm so glad. Now I don't have to give you a, cry and give you a big speech and tell you how much I love you and adore you and think that you do the best job ever. But oh, just watch me go. I gave it to you anyway, anyway.
Thank you. Well, go ahead and Jill, call for the vote, make it official, I guess.
So what I hear is Keith being nominated for chair and Andy as vice chair. Um, Alicia, what do you say?
Yes.
Um, Ashley.
Bleep, yes. I was being professional.
Yes.
I'm gonna be you guys.
Yes, I've been keeping my microphone muted because I have the pitter patter of grandfi- grandkid feet above my head and it's a little noisy for you guys, so.
Is it Odin? Is it cute little Odie?
He's a busy dude.
I love him. He's so cute.
Jim?
I vote to retain Keith for sure.
Andy?
Yes, for sure I'm Keith.
And you? As vice?
If, if need be, if no one else wants to, I will be happy to help out, yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, we have our chair and our vice chair for next year. Um.
Thank you.
And then.
Now I'm embarrassed.
You don't need to be embarrassed. You know, maybe we can all do, do everybody a favor and we'll try and be more efficient, keep it shorter for you, Keith.
Oh, we're, really, it's not a, it hasn't. I'm, I'm just.
I always say yes to that.
When we do get together and you see me with a cane or a walker, you'll know why, and that's all. Hopefully, we will get together within the first quarter of twenty twenty-one. If everybody's expectations is spot on. In other words, vaccines. So.
Can I share something? I'm really excited.
And thank you for your hard work. We really do. I know I'm speaking for all of us. We have the best staff and Jill, you've been right on top of things. So thorough has been pointed out today several times with the applicants. And the developers, you're very thorough. You're, you have every eye dotted, every T crossed, very few surprises.
Lately, it's been. I'm, I've been everywhere lately, so thank you. That means a lot.
How are we with the, how are we with the new uh developer, sorry administrator?
Yeah, I know, I know they did um interviews.
Do you wanna know what I know?
I know people backed out, but I know they have one more tomorrow, but I have no clue who, yeah.
We're reviewing their, they, they were asked to do a five-minute um PowerPoint presentation as an introduction before they were interviewed on Zoom. And so those were sent to the council now to review. And the one that's being interviewed tomorrow will also be sent. And then based on those, I, I'm assuming that we'll have a, a system where we recommend which ones and, you know, and possibly for second interviews or to move forward as it, I think we're gonna have second interviews, that's my understanding. But I don't know for sure about that part, but that's where we are. I just got sent a bunch of videos today.
So other than that, we've got nothing.
Yeah, Dean's got a question.
Can we be part of that interview process since we're stuck with them too?
I asked, I asked to be part of it.
The, the mayor made up his team um of people. We all submitted our interest in doing that. He didn't wanna have a, a quorum. And so he chose two council members, Laurie the chief and um Bill to interview. The.
Bill, 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 Bill?
Our Bill, so as the first round. And I'm not sure what he'll do for the second round. My, my suggestion would be to choose other council members or other people, planning commission or whatever, to be in on that, but it's the mayor's decision, so.
Oh, I figure whoever is picked will.
There's some good applicants. There are. There, I, I've done some, it, you know, it, it really matters, at least to me, what you do online, because I looked, I looked, took all their names. I did Google searches, Facebook searches, Instagram searches, Twitter searches and looked, looked, I called their former employers, looked at everything about them and what they were like and noticed who their friends were on Facebook to see if they were mutual friends. And then contacted the mutual friends between us to say, so tell me a little bit about this person. And um of all the ones that were selected to be interviewed, so.
You're, you're a stalker, Sarah.
I am. I did it, I did it to Bill before he came. I did it to Bill, cause I noticed that he had, he has a cousin was a mutual friend of his. So I contacted my cousin and also, yeah, anyway.
All right, anybody else have anything else before we adjourn?
I do.
Yes, Jill.
This is, so I wanted to tell you some good news. You know how we resoned twenty-seven hundred?
Yeah, yeah.
I have had at least a minimum of four phone calls a week on different parcels on twenty-seven hundred. I don't know if anything's gonna come of it, that's, that's the thing, but we've had some people call and ask and show interest.
Get started. Once it gets started.
Yay, eight.
It, it will come. I'm always shocked the amount of traffic that I'm seeing on Washington Boulevard and twenty-seven hundred north. I mean, it just seems like every month there is more and more and more.
Well, I feel like the more things we have here, the more people will stop here. Like if you have one, one restaurant, people are gonna go down to Riverdale and get everything done. Well, if you have everything here, it can be a destination, bam. I'm excited. And I'm excited that Keith is staying. I'm just saying, this is a happy night.
I still want Trader Joe's.
And a Target.
Hey, Julie, I will, I'll give you the real estate, the guy who's in charge of real estate and locating Trader Joe's. I've talked to him a couple of times. Do you want his phone number? We all need to get online.
You, you know what? I, I would contact you.
Yes, cause I've talked to him a couple of times and you know what, yes, Provo's way different, but John Curtis did. And how they put a huge social media campaign together and that's how they got Trader Joe's to come to their city.
Hey. The way we gather, especially for like the flag thing and Founder's Day. You wanna have a community ask for Trader Joe's, this is the right community to do so.
Heck, yeah.
There you go. Okay, anything else, folks? Everybody have a very Merry Christmas. Thank you.
I need you guys, I will send an email out. I will be bringing a gift to y'all. So, y'all, I'm excited. I like this one. I mean, it's not a million bucks, no stuff like that. Little thank you for all your help and I love all the questions that you guys bring. It helps me be a better person and make sure I do my job better. So I will be bringing a thank you, little thank you to you guys. Um. Are you guys home on Friday afternoons?
Tomorrow?
I'm gonna make it tomorrow. How about next week?
You know what? I'm home ninety percent of the time anymore, Jill.
Tell you what, I will run to your guys' houses. If no one answers, I'll shoot you an email and say, you gotta see me at the office.
Okay, you know where I'll be. I'll just be like up the street, a couple of blocks, at a school.
Is that fair?
That's fair.
Then I go see your smiling faces face to face.
So if it's not tomorrow, next week, we'll be clear to be business as usual. If it's tomorrow, you're gonna have to do a DoorDash, cause we can't be exposed to anyone. No, I said that wrong. We can't expose ourselves to anyone. I think I said that wrong.
No, we, we don't want you to expose yourself to standing. Crosses the decorum line that we've.
Wait, wait, wait. It might be, you know, took a page out of Nate's sons.
That violates Weber High's new code of ethics on Zoom.
Your eyes.
You're awesome.
Happy holidays, guys. I miss you guys. We need, hopefully sooner than later, we can be back.
You guys, this was a really good discussion tonight. Thank you. And you guys are just awesome. You do really, really good, hard, thorough work. Thank you. You're awesome.
Thank you. All right, adios. Have a good night.
Bye.
Bye bye. Good Jimmy James. Bye, Alicia.
Yeah.